It is our belief that this project will repair the core of our park, make it safer, add more open space for activities, add additional seating, and increase visibility of the band shell. It will prepare the park for the next 100 years and present the basin as a prominent focal point of the park as it should be. The Basin Park Project has been presented to the Parks Commission, the Planning Commission, the HDC, the Preservation Society, who are now cosponsors, the Rotary Club, and numerous individuals, including the Keeper of Eureka's Historical Faith, Ms. Westfall. All of these organizations and individuals, amounting to over 200 people strong, have overwhelmingly expressed their approval and support. I'd now like to show a quick concept video, and then we'll be happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Long before the first white man set foot in was now Eureka Springs, the area was sacred ground for Native Americans. It was a place of beauty where they could gather in peace and partake of the cool healing spring. In the 1850s, Dr. Alva Jackson, after years of searching for the legendary Indian healing spring, discovered the basin that had been carved into the limestone by Chief Black Dog's father in the late 1700s. After witnessing his son's vision restored by the water from the spring, Dr. Jackson began bottling and selling the water as "Dr. Jackson's Eye Water." In 1879, Dr. Jackson invited his friend, Judge Saunders, who was suffering from incurable leg sore, to camp with him near the basin and to bathe the afflicted limb in the spring. Within a few weeks, the wound had healed, and the judge began to spread news of his miraculous cure. Within a month, there were 20 wagons filled with visitors seeking their own cures. By early fall of that year, hundreds of small structures were erected around the spring. By the end of the following year, the town of Eureka Springs had been born, booming to 5,000 people. The basin had become Eureka's sense of place, but as more people arrived, it became obscured by faucets, pipes, and storage tanks built to deliver the water more efficiently to the ever-growing crowds of visitors. In 1890, through the efforts of the newly-formed Basin Park Improvement Committee, Basin Spring Park was established. Locally cut limestone walls were built, fountains and decorative iron were installed, and the small basin for which the park was named became virtually lost at the bottom of an 11-foot-deep well. The park has undergone many changes and additions over the past century, but none of them led us back to what was the genesis of the town of Eureka Springs: the basin, the place to gather and to heal. In this video, you have seen the plans to open the center of the park and to free the historic basin, to display the icon that represents the history of Eureka's famous healing springs for all to see. It is our hope that you will want to leave your mark on the story of this unique town with an historical engraved brick marking your place in the history of Eureka Springs. Your purchase will not only help us free the basin for visitors to visually enjoy for generations to come, but will be a lasting memorial to you and yours in the ongoing development of Eureka Springs. If you can watch this video again and learn more about this project and how to leave your mark by visiting www.basinspring.com.
Thanks, sir. Can we move this off the table? Are you guys done with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So we just have a little more room to operate here? Take a few seconds. I'd like to ask the council, since they're doing the presentation, they won't take questions now. Is this going to be in part of number five, the open discussion? Do you want to combine the two now? By motion to...
I would move to incorporate both discussions at this point.
Okay, made in second. To amend to mix number, the one we're currently on, the park presentation and the open discussion. Made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous? It sounded like it. Okay, good. That way we can knock out two with one. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's fielding the questions?
All of us.
Who's on first?
What?
You see him on second. Okay, guys.
Any questions?
They're here. Might as well ask them now. Okay. Done. Go ahead.
Let's send a curve, the ADA. How about the ADA?
Well, one of your own might be the best to answer that question. I hate to lean on them, but it's not that we can't, but you can do the...
We have contacted the state architect who has the ADA, reviews all the ADA compliances for the state. They said that this project would not comply and would not need to conform because it's not, you can't make it with ramps handicapped accessible. Cases like that, what they have done, in Little Rock, for example, with the old State House, I don't know if you're familiar with that or not. The old State House is a multi-story building that couldn't support a ramp or access or elevators into it, and so what they did was they ended up putting a video, and that was allowable for the ADA. You're allowing somebody with a handicap disability to still view the same features that somebody who has regular physical attributes could make it and go down there. So visually, they can see it. We've also allowed a cutout within the stone wall itself where somebody in a wheelchair could roll up and look down and see into the well, so they could visually see that same area. We feel, and the state felt at that time, that that would be doing everything we could to make it compatible with the ADA and allow people with handicaps to visualize it. We've also considered a visual, possibly a camera, like I said, down in the spring and visually putting up a monitor somehow. That's still in design phase, but that's one aspect of it that could work.
Anything else for a discussion? Ms. Bell?
This is still in design phase?
Oh, absolutely.
Do you have blueprints yet?
No. It's still, we won't, I'm speaking out of turn. We probably won't get into any blueprints into construction drawings. We've done the design. We haven't done any construction documents into it until we've raised the money to do that.
So, this project has been approved by the HDC and the planning... This project has been approved by the HDC and the Planning Commission without any blueprints?
That would be correct.
Really? So how do we know if everything's going to be to code? The step risers and the step depths and all different sorts of things like that? How do we know if it's going to be...
We wouldn't, we wouldn't build it unless it was to code.
And I might interject. The design phase includes that, Ms. Bell. That includes the making sure the steps do conform to code. You got the 7-inch risers, they come out 12 inches from the center, and it's fire-off staircase, and so they meet the codes, four steps. Everything else is designed to meet the code. Now, that doesn't mean that we're doing the construction documents. Construction documents is where you go in and you design the foundation, and I'm telling you that, okay, we're going to have four number five rebar in the foundations, and as the steps go up, they're going to be made out of concrete that's going to be 3,000 PSI. We're going to have a walls of eight-inch walls that are going to go up with such and such. Rebar, that's your construction documents. This is a design document that meets the codes. And when we present it to, or when it's been presented to the HDC, the Planning Commission, they're presenting a design document. They're not presenting the construction documents. Big difference. You don't get into the construction documents until you raise the money. There's a lot of engineering that goes into that aspect of it.
So it will have to come before all of those entities again for approval when, at such time as you come up with the...
If the design changes, it would go back to the form. If the design doesn't change, no. Then it would go straight to the building inspector for the review. The building inspector is the one who reviews the building codes, not the Planning Commission or the HDC. The Planning Commission makes sure that it conforms to all zoning regulations and setbacks and items like that. HDC makes sure that it conforms to the historic district guidelines. The building inspector makes sure that it conforms to the building codes.
To help you visualize this, is everybody familiar with Sweet Spring?
I got married there.
You have not been there?
I got married there.
Oh, you're very familiar with it. It's very similar in concept to Sweet Spring, though it will be infinitely built better than Sweet Spring because of modern construction techniques. We just, we can, we have the ability to build things better now. It'll actually be smaller in footprint than Sweet Spring. Actually, quite a bit.
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent smaller. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And you can do that and still meet all the, like, you know, the steps have to, the risers have to be so tall and so many feet out from the point of the step it has to be, meet all that?
Lanny, we will jump through every hoop we have to, and we'll go looking for more hoops to jump through.
Yeah.
This will be done beyond anybody's expectation. We're totally committed to that.
What percentage of Basin Park is it going to take up?
Less than what it currently does.
I have a percentage.
Of the, of the, the floor itself, the main level?
Less than 17%?
We've actually, I think, kicked that number around before.
Yes, sir. We have a percentage. And we put a percentage on it.
Seventeen percent plus.
We feel that there will be more usable space under it.
If you count the statue area and the way it's designed now versus the way it will end up, there'll actually be more, more area to actually stand than there is right now.
Ms. Bell?
What's occurred over the course of time is there has not been a comprehensive overview of Basin Park until now. It's been kind of a hodgepodge of placement of things in the park. If some of you remember, there used to be a cannon up on the wall. The doughboy is sitting on, standing on the third incarnation of that pedestal. Without a comprehensive overview as things were placed in the park, what had occurred over time is basically the park had been bisected. You had the fountain, you had the well, you had the doughboy. You have relegated the common area in front of the band shell to a very small footprint and made it dangerous because of the raised lip of that semicircle that's right in front of the band shell. So by consolidating the area in front of the band shell, by moving the doughboy, the outer edge of the basin enhancement is a seating area. So you gain overall seating with that, and it, the net gain to the park is a larger common area in front of the band shell and more seating. The fountain itself is in dire need of repair, and it's just a practical construction. Having been a contractor, it's a practical attitude, and I applaud the commission that this will be done in one phase as opposed to a piecemeal approach, which over the last hundred and some years has been the approach to Basin Park. So for now, we've had a master plan that's been on file at the parks for a number of years, and that's, that's the first time there's been a comprehensive overlook at Basin Park. You realize that of late, on request of the community, that the bronze statue was moved up to the park and ride. There's also plans to consolidate more open spaces by moving some of the statuary around because there has been no overview of how things were placed in the park, and they've been rather hodgepodge. Myself, I've had an affinity for the basin itself. A mistake was made some hundred and some years ago. There was no consideration, and it's probably not fair to judge people a hundred and some years ago why they relegated the actual stone, the touchstone of Eureka Springs, what the entire city is built around, to a cistern that's not visible, and I feel like this is correcting a mistake that was made over 100 years ago and opening up that spring as Ms. Westfall, the historian for the community, she's so excited about this because her words that ring in my ear today is that, you know, "I hope, you know, before I pass that I'll be able to see that stone," and that, that's it for me as far as, you know, that's quite an emotional assertion on her part, and I'll let her words speak for the community in regards to that.
Counsel, you got any further comments?
I do.
Doc?
It's a pretty big project, I know that. You put a lot of work into it. Several committees are behind you. How about the general public, how they feel? Bad meetings, what they say?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I mean, we did have a public hearing in this regard at Parks, and I forget how many people we had speak up. Bruce is not here right now, but in the teens somewhere, and it was mixed. It was a mixed review. Obviously, that's very unscientific. It would be great to know exactly how every citizen in town felt about this. You always hope for that because you want to exercise the majority will of the community, but I don't have an answer for that.
I would like to add, though, I mean, we have been before over 200 people that are citizens of the city as we went through this process. So there's 200 plus citizens.
I understand that, yes. That's what I'm asking. There's also about 1,800 other citizens in this town, isn't there?
That's, that's very true, and their, and their opinion counts. We don't deny that for one second.
I found that out the hard way.
Yeah, and we are too. You know, and, and we're not trying to push anything on anybody. We think the merits of this project speak for themselves, and, and in my heart, I honestly feel like that once this is built and everybody gets to see it and appreciate it, that, that most of those that are opposed to it today will absolutely love it. That's just human nature. We're resistant to change. Things like this scare us. We love what's there, but this is, this is really going to be special, and I just, I encourage everybody to at least be open-minded and educate yourself about it. And in, in speaking to that, I think this was on the video, this is very formative. We have a domain, basinspring.com, which is directed to a page on our Parks website. That's, again, a work in progress. It'll get better, but you can get some information there at basinspring.com. We also distributed, I don't know if you got, it was this morning, you know, granted, but we also distributed some white paper Q&amp;A to each of you. Have you all received this yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Probably, maybe you haven't had time to read through it, but this addresses a lot of the questions that have been posed at our public hearing and through other sources, and this will be a work in progress, too. We'll add to this and refine it as time goes by. You know, we just want to disseminate as much information as we can. We have nothing to hide. It's all right on top of the table. You know, please take the time to contact us, go to the website, read your white paper, and ask us questions if you have additional questions after this meeting.
Ms. Bell? Here I go again. I put my big boy pants on and publicly apologize to Mr. Featherstone, Mr. Levine, for me trying to follow the request of the citizens that this be on the agenda properly, which I appreciate you doing tonight. The biggest concerns that I've gotten the calls on is that there are some people who would like to really see a public hearing once this thing is a little bit further down the road because they feel like, and this are the exact words, and it's not coming from a select group, it's coming from several people, that since this is being done with public funds, Parks, Springs, Basin Springs Committee doesn't have to do anything other than what they want to do. I'm just passing along citizenry concern that at some point in time, I understand that you aren't going to start anything until the construction design money, is that the right, is collected, and that the down season, from reading the Q&amp;A pages, that you're going to do it in the off-season months versus, so we're looking at, at least till after Christmas. If the windfall of money that I've heard is going to happen like that, you got an easy road to hoe, but I'm just expressing the concerns that's been given to me.
Are you offered to buy some bricks right now?
To possibly consider another because, you know how it goes in Eureka Springs. You have, this commission has one hearing, they go, "Okay, well, there has to be another." I've heard that it was conceptionally approved at HDC and Planning, that it wasn't approved, which is understandable at the design point. I'd hate to see you have to go before those people again, but at the same time, I think for everyone's edification, it, it might not hurt once that construction design is ready to, you know, there's excavation permits required, you know, a lot of different things, a lot of different people involved, that the way people are interpreting it, I'm behind it, but, you know, it needs to be.
Well, again, we're not trying to hide anything, and there's work ongoing. We meet regularly. This is being refined every time we meet. Literally, there are several of us that work on this every day. It is an involved project. This is a major project, and we, and we do want the majority of people in town behind this. We really do, and I honestly think that if everybody knows the facts about this, they just know the information, that they will end up supporting it. I can't imagine us being that wrong. We're so excited about this. We're so enthusiastic. We think it's such a great thing. We think our forefathers, the fellows that, and women, that built the park 130 years ago would absolutely love what we're doing. They'd be at the forefront of this. That's anybody's guess, obviously, but we feel that strongly about it, but we want to make this as public as we can. We'll, we'll do what else we have to do. We feel like we've done quite a bit to this point, but all I ask is that, is that people get good information before they form opinions. Gosh, I've got two phone numbers in the phone book. I'll give my cellphone to anybody. I've got several emails. I return every single email and every single phone call, and I won't lie to you. You know, just ask for the information, and then if you're not, if you're not supportive, understood. You know, we all can agree on everything all the time. It just doesn't work that way, but that's my two cents.
Thank, you've been great in answering my questions, Phil. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Rick?
Oh, and can, apology accepted?
Thank you.
But one thing that keeps popping up when people talk to me about this, and it's kind of an odd thing, but they keep, you know, when I'm talking to them about the bricks, they say, "Oh, what about the old bricks? The bricks that were sold years back and placed in the park?" And, you know, they're attaching that project to this project and how that faltered and failed, and, you know...
I totally, totally understand that. I don't think anybody that's involved with this project had anything to do with that.
Yeah.
And if they did, that probably wouldn't have happened, but that's hindsight. That's, that's an unfortunate situation. There is no connection between the two at all, other than those bricks are in Basin Park, and we're proposing to put bricks in Basin Park. That's the only connection. And that may be something that we address down the line in our master plan. It's not part of this project, but...
Well, we'll find out how enthusiastic the public is in the fundraising process, and if we don't raise the money, this isn't going to happen.
It's not going to happen. We're going to have all the money in hand before we scratch the first piece of dirt.
Read the final saying, that's where this takes place at, on just the money?
Well, you know, if, if, you know, the committee's behind it, and I don't know that anybody's going anywhere, and we've jumped through all the hoots, and we raised the money, at that point, I think it's, yeah, it's, it's a done deal. And by then, at the earliest, that's going to be this off-season. More realistically, it's going to be the following off-season. Between now and then, I can't help but think that everybody in town is going to have a pretty good grasp of what this is all about.
What's your game plan if you sell half of the amount of bricks you need to, to make the project go? What are you going to do then?
That's a really good question, and how would you answer that, Leroy?
It's a question that we've asked many times at meetings.
Yeah.
And it's not, you know, there's sense it will not...
Yeah.
Excuse me. It's, it's something that's been asked at the meeting several times, and the thing that this, this is based on the principle that when we get the money, we'll build it. If we don't, we won't. So halfway there, we'll be working on the next half to make it happen.
I guess one way to answer that, Janet, is we're not, we're not going to spend anybody's money that we take.
And you're not going to stop?
And we're not going to stop.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm an eternal optimist. I'm thinking this off-season, but if it takes five years, it takes five years. Yeah.
Double-edged sword question. One of the concerns that's been voiced to me is, and I'm not sure, and I would defer to the city attorney, there's a lot of people that have questioned me whether or not this has to come before council for approval, and number two, is it not Basin Spring one of the reservations within the city that is under federal guidelines versus just what we feel like we can do? That's a question, not a...
Well, the, the best way I can answer that is, is there very well could be some gray area there. Our interpretation is that, that Parks has the ability to do this project within its own confines and doesn't need council approval. We would love to have council approval. I mean, we're, we're not asking for anything tonight or anything in the future, but it would be great if we were to get unanimous approval of city council for this project, and then, then the, the city at large can, can view this as a, as a project that needs some serious consideration. Short of that, who knows? But I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Gray area, gray answer.
Yeah, we're, yeah, that's, that's the only way I know how to answer it this point, unless you guys have a better...
What about the Temple Park?
I'm, I'm not even going to address that because anything I say is not, it's not something I'd want to stand behind.
I can speak to the projects that have, that have occurred in the park with, with the arch and all, and it's under the purview of the Parks Commission, and they hold sanction over what occurs in the park. The, the arch didn't come before council approval. We made it aware to everybody in the community about what was being done, you know, and over the last hundred and some years, the feds haven't stepped in and said, "No, you can't do that," so I would find that to be a bit of a reach to think that they're sitting there concerned about what goes on in Basin Park, but I just don't, don't see council having a, yes, I'd love to get approval from everybody on council, but that's not in our purview.
Ms. Bell?
I'm surprised to hear Mr. DeVito admit that they didn't get permission to put that sign in the park because it says in the Handbook for Arkansas Municipal Officials, which is the authority, 1453, five, or 1443, 502, Powers of Council Generally, Section B1, "The council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation." So I believe Parks, or whoever wants to do this, does need the approval of council, and they probably needed approval of council to put that sign in the park as well. But that's watering the bridge.
Where the gray area comes into play, our enabling legislation that, that we operate under as Parks disputes that, or says something that's, that's perhaps contradictory to that. So that's something for you guys to settle in, you know, with your city attorney.
One last second. Understand, and being on the Springs Committee, it's my understanding that there is only one spring that is the city's goal, Parks' goal, to be potable, and that's magnetic. And I, I heard as late as this afternoon that there's already people lining up for concessions to sell little glasses so people can go down and drink the water in the springs once this project's done. That's the perception that is out there. That's all, the only reason I'm bringing it up.
That's the first I've heard of it. That's all I can say.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to go on record as saying, as far as I'm concerned, this presentation tonight does not imply consent.
On your behalf, is that?
On the, as far as I'm concerned, on the behalf of the council. Okay?
Well, again, we're not here asking for anything. We're, we're just here to educate. Yeah. Yeah.
I won't go there.
Yeah. I think that would be up to the individual members.
If I could say one last thing, and my, and I apologize for saying this, because when I say things like this, my fellow committee members cringe. We're a town of personalities, and reality is, there are people in town who don't like me, there are people in town who don't like James, there are people in town who don't like Butch. There are probably even people in town who don't like these two guys, and I can't imagine that, but that's probably the case. And I just ask everybody, please get past the personalities and simply judge this project on its merits and what it offers to Eureka, and how our visitors will feel about it, because it belongs to them almost as much as it does to us, and just, and just kind of let the chips fall where they may, but try to keep the personalities out of it.
That was an interesting comment that you just made about person bearing personalities into it, because I don't think anybody else had mentioned anything about that to this point.
Okay, okay. It's a little off base, so let's...
Yeah.
Any further comments? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Okay. All right. Since we combined those two, this reverts back to dog control issue is number two.
Ask a question?
Yeah, let's wait until the noise comes up.
Oh, I just wondered if Bruce needed to leave.
Bruce, I think Mr. Powell has a question for you, sir.
That's my question. I'd like to suspend the rules and move the land bank discussion up. If Mr. Levine is going to be here, if he's not, I'll suggest that...
Yeah, Bill is going to represent that, so I'm sure that'd be great.
Since we moved the other one up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I don't know that we might have people in the other room for the dog ordinance. I'm not, I don't know why we would be changing the agenda now, the order of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I withdraw my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Move to discuss the dog control.
Okay. Just a second.
Nobody out there?
Okay.
Thanks, James.
Ms. Alexander?
I would like to take the dog control issue directly to a workshop. Seems to me that we have main ordinances in place, and it's an issue of discussing and enforcement for the department heads.
You making that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeVito, was made?
Making workshop.
Made and seconded for a workshop discussion?
I was going, since it was put on the agenda last time, at some people's request to me, I will volunteer to chair the workshop committee, and I would like anybody else that's on council that's interested, but particularly the input from those that have come forward, because they have sent me a lot of good, good points, but I think we need to be very careful, because it does need to come back to this table.
Yes, sir. Okay, motion made to have a workshop. Mr. DeVito seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That was a very good call on everybody's part. I appreciate that. I was going to make the recommendation later on, because we are working with the ordinance, and I think we all need to be there to tweak it to the right way, because apparently this is a major issue within the community now, and it's our duty to address it. So thank you very much. Okay, so we workshop on that one. That brings us, we don't know if you're in the workshop. I think, I think we still have a ways to go yet, so we don't know if everybody in the workshop, that acceptable? Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell.
I was going to address the concerns that were brought up tonight as far as some type of emergency situation. Number one, do people understand that Jimmy Evans is a contract with, through the police department, and the police department could decide to give him 40 hours a week if he could work that? So we do need to address their concerns or presented...
If he wanted to work that, yes.
Right. So we need, we need to at least address some type of stopgap until we can all get together for a workshop to...
Well, you know, this is my opinion, having been on the other side before, is the fact that the ordinance, the ordinance is a workable ordinance.
Yes.
It, it probably does need a little tweaking due to special emergency cases like this. If, if the public wants to address those issues, and they're more than welcome to come to my office, we've been doing this on an overlong, overgoing basis. Actually, I was coming into work the other morning and picked up a pit bull terrier with no collar on it, running around in traffic in front of Tads and Joyce. I just put him in the back of the truck, brought him out here. Somebody came and claimed him, but he didn't have a collar on or anything else, so it's, it's not just the police that go pick him up. The mayor does it, too, so. If, if there's a dog issue I wish we could be addressed at that moment, and my understanding is on the, the, the second dog that was killed, there was not a report made on it by the owner. So it's kind of up to the owner to address that issue, even though it is an issue that we'll take care of with this ordinance after we get it and beat it around a little bit. Okay? Anything else regarding the dog issue? Okay, we'll set up a workshop. I'll leave it up to council. Do you want to include public comments at this workshop?
Certainly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, is that in form of a motion?
It doesn't have to be.
Okay, all right. We can do whatever. We're not trying to workshop, so...
They're always welcome to come. It's a public meeting.
Okay, anything else on that one? All right. So that moves us down to, and I may have the number wrong, but it's discussion of the land bank.
Number three.
Number three, okay. So if we get Bruce and Bill back in here. I'm proud of you guys. This is, this is going very well. This is going very well. I like this. It's 20 after 8. We're, well, we're beating it a little bit than we have been before.
We've got to listen to him again.
Yeah. Yeah.
Motion to discuss.
Okay. Motion to discuss the land bank. All right. I think Mrs. Ballot's beaten Mr. DeVito, so we'll put her down.
Okay.
You got the floor? Oh, you got it. Okay, now, how come we have to vote sometimes whenever we do this?
You're supposed to, every time. It's a discussion.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, because we've been doing it different ways.
Which is ridiculous.
Yeah, I know. All in favor? All right, okay. Motion carries. Go forward, Bill.
Okay. Raise your hand if you're on the council and are not familiar with the concept of the land bank. Seriously, you are not. You were not at, you were not at our workshop. That's, that's correct.
I wasn't at the workshop, but I'm familiar with it.
Am I correct in saying that everybody had a copy of this narrative with background information about the land bank? Janet's shaking her head, yes. Did you not get a copy of this thing?
No.
Okay. It's two pages.
Could have been through any email address.
Make sure you got it.
Oh, yes, I did.
Oh, you didn't get a copy of that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, okay.
I ought to read it.
When you get the time, that'll give you some background information as to what the concept is and what our goal is and whatnot. We also, and correct me if I'm misstating this, they got a copy of the proposed ordinance? At the, at the workshop, you guys asked us to rough out an ordinance with regard to the land bank. And Bruce and I did that as attorney-ish as we could, and it's a working document, you know, for your consideration. And I think it's a good start, a real good start. Has everybody had a chance or an opportunity to, to look at this? What do I need to tell you? What questions do you have? What, what reservations, concerns, et cetera, et cetera?
May I see that paper you just sent? I'm not sure if I have it.
The proposed ordinance?
Yes, sir.
I have it somewhere.
It's two pages. Do you need one thing?
I got one. Thank you.
In the second page of the narrative.
Okay.
This here, second page of the narrative. I know you've got questions, Ken. You always have questions. You know, just to, in a nutshell, this is a, this is a means by which we can dispose of property that we don't need and acquire property that we do need, and a means to hold the funds until we can use the funds to better spend them. This somewhat grew out of a desire to buy the lot adjacent to Magnetic Spring. If you're facing Magnetic Spring, the lot immediately to the left that the city has paved a portion of, and Donnie has gardened part of, it would be wonderful if we could add that to Magnetic Spring to, just to increase the size of the footprint of the park, and, and it's, it has some great rock structures that Donnie could just go nuts with, but, but also to protect the spring. It tests very well right now. As you said, it's the only one that tests right now well enough to be potable. And if somebody were to build on that site, it's highly unlikely, because it's not a great buildable site, but if they were, that would very likely prevent that water from being potable. It would certainly detract from the, the Magnetic Spring part.
Comments? Ms. Ballot?
I've gotten a lot of calls about this, and almost all of them are in favor of this concept. I am, I think I'm in favor of this concept, although when we were just talking about what, what might be happening in Basin Park, one of my concerns might be that the Parks Department would presume that any land that was procured through this land bank fund would be something that they thought they could do whatever they wanted to with, without the approval of city council? Isn't that what you, we were just kind of telling me?
Well, we're not control freaks at Parks. Like, like any entity, it's great to have the ability or the flexibility to exercise your will a little more freely. I'm sure y'all feel that way. We feel that way at Parks and whatnot.
Excuse me.
But we would hope that anything we do at Parks would have the endorsement of our city council, because we like to act in a way that we think we represent the majority will of the community. I've been doing this for almost 13 years, and I can't remember an instance where we knowingly did something that was counter to what we thought the majority will was, or that we knew the majority will was. So I don't think there's any danger in the money being poorly spent. We might argue as to whether or not it should be spent over here versus over here, but our intention at Parks is to do things like add to Magnetic Spring, perhaps acquire some property that enables us, or makes it easier for us to continue with urban trail system, things of that nature.
Well, I can understand how it might seem to you as if we, sitting at this table, seem to be control freaks to you, but truly...
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I want to go on record, I didn't say that.
Okay, well, it sort of sounded like that to me, but truly, we're...
I'm misunderstood sometimes, yeah.
Okay.
I, I say things poorly sometimes, okay?
Okay, well, you know, we don't mean to seem that way. We are supposed to be like the voice of the people, kind of. We're, we're all supposed to be the voice of the people, and certainly if we can talk to one another and, and come to compromises, conclusions, that's, that's excellent. My other concern would be, I'm not real clear on if this land bank happens and, and this goes through, who would actually own the property? Would the Parks Department own it, or would the city?
City owns all the property.
City owns all of it.
We don't, Parks hasn't owned anything. The city owns all of it. Yeah.
Well, then, I've got to tell you, there's a lot of people who think this is a really good idea.
Good. Very glad to hear that.
That, that just answers another question. I have a couple more sleepless nights, and I'll have the rest of the code memorized. I do believe that purchase and sale of city property does have to come through council. I stand corrected, and yes, I have heard nothing but good things, and it is not a land grab of 2011 in Eureka Springs. It's a beneficial, trying to protect the springs that's been an issue for the last four years that I know of, when it was first presented to the Planning Commission. I applaud the efforts that Parks has been...
Thank you. Very well said. That's all it is. It's a, it's a means by which to responsibly let go of some properties that the city will never need, has no use for, and acquire property that perhaps it can put to good use. It's just that simple.
Any further comments? Last chance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, but it's not necessarily for Bill. What's our next step? Do we need to establish an ordinance?
Yes.
In a line item for, to establish $5,000 for, to establish a land bank? Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. DeVito.
I understand.
To draft up an ordinance. Okay.
That's what didn't happen the last time.
Yes.
Second.
Restate your motion, please.
I'd like to, to have the city attorney draft a ordinance establishing a land bank with the initial funds of $5,000.
Okay. Motion made? Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Powell seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right. From my calculations here, we postpone number six.
Number seven.
Okay. Well, okay, next on the list is the endless bids. Is that correct?
Yes.
Page one, page? Okay.
Motion to discuss.
All right.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Before you, you have the ordinance to, well, let's see, we have two ordinances. One is to waive the competitive bidding. I'll just read it out loud. Okay. One ordinance is to waive the competitive bidding to purchase a Frasier Type 1 14-foot generated power module, that's GPM, on 2011 Dodge Ram, 450 ambulance for the Eureka Springs Fire Department.